So it's six o'clock, I'm gonna call the school committee meeting to order for the purpose of presenting the fiscal year sixteen budget to the public. And our interim superintendent, Dr. Judy Hul, will be doing the presentation. So, Dr. Hul, why don't I turn it right over to you and we can get started?
Thank you. If the committee doesn't mind, I am not going to stand up. I've just had a treatment on a bad knee and so I have to stay off it for the rest of the evening, so. Just so you have some status on the proposed FY16 budget. We are looking at an FY15, which is the current year that we're in, a total budget of twelve million, two hundred fifty-eight thousand, six hundred sixty dollars. That includes the eighty-five thousand dollars that was voted as special town meeting back in March. Some of these numbers have adjusted a little bit in the past couple of days, just based on some other things that we know. The FY16 level service budget, which right at the moment, we're looking at two different versions of that. The first is one that includes ninety-two thousand dollars in net reductions. It would be a reduction of some stipends for extra load at the high school. Reduction of one section of kindergarten due to decline in enrollment. And our teacher reduction to a zero point six by her request and with some help of some folks at the high school would be able to happen. A reduction of a zero point eight high school teacher and the addition of NEAS costs. And when you put all of that together, it comes up to a net reduction of ninety-two thousand dollars, which then makes the total proposed budget moving forward twelve thousand, seven hundred ninety-nine thousand and three hundred thirty-three dollars, or about a four, five point four, one-four percent increase. The level service budget, and that increase is actually over this, what we are calling a gap budget down here, just so people are clear about that. Then, we took a look at a level service budget that could assume some potential savings in transportation to the tune of about a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, which brings us down to this number, which is twelve million, six hundred sixteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars, or a difference of four forty-seven, four forty-two. Now, based on what the town has told us about funding and what we know about state funding right now, we're looking at what's known as a gap budget of twelve million, one sixty-nine, zero four-one, which is actually a decrease from this number by about eighty-nine thousand dollars, or a zero point seven percent decrease. So that's currently where we stand. And then, over the past few weeks, you as a committee have asked the administration to then go through and take a look at some proposed reductions. And through conversations and taking a look at this together, here's the current list. In special education, we are looking at out-of-district tuitions that would be reduced by seventy thousand dollars. Some students will be returning from out-of-district placements to Granby. It takes away a contingency, which the net result is then, we could potentially require a special town meeting to have to raise and appropriate any funds for somebody else coming through the door. There will be some decrease in transportation costs, but because of the way the town funds that, there's really no impact on the budget per se. So that's a budget-neutral item. And that we would decrease the evaluation team leaders currently. We have a one point five FTE in the district. We would decrease that by point five, or a net decrease of twenty-five thousand dollars. Three other sets of proposed reductions. First, in maintenance, we have a retirement with the craftsman position in the district that we would recommend, or we have talked about combining the director of maintenance and the craftsmen's position together, so that after that retirement, there would be about a savings of thirty thousand dollars by doing that. At West Street School, if you remember back on the slide I showed you a minute ago, we were gonna reduce a section of kindergarten. We've had, we did not take the paraprofessional out in the level service budget, 'cause we wanted to make sure we did not need that paraprofessional elsewhere. We've since determined that we would not need that paraprofessional elsewhere, so that's a savings of about seventeen thousand dollars. And also, again, taking a look at enrollments, that we would reduce one section of grade two at about fifty thousand dollars. The third area is nursing. Our current school nurse leader is at eighty percent administrative and twenty percent, or one day a week in clinic doing direct services to students. The recommendation is to go back to what her original allocation was, which is sixty percent administrative and forty percent in clinic, except, which would be two days a week, which would allow us to offload some salary into the essential school health services grant and would save us about eighty thousand, eight hundred dollars. And then, we move to central office. We have an early retirement incentive, which is not gonna be required for FY16. That's in the FY15 budget of twenty thousand dollars, so that was originally carried over. We have determined we are not gonna need it, so we can take it out. There was an administrative stipend for superintendent coverage of two thousand dollars that we could also take out, thanks to these happy little cellphones that I carry with me day and night. You have agreed by consensus that you would continue with the interim superintendent position through June thirtieth, with the anticipation of a full-time superintendent by July one, and that should be twenty sixteen.
Yeah.
Thank you. So that number should be twenty sixteen, but the savings would be twenty-seven thousand, five hundred fifty dollars over what was budgeted for the superintendent salary. And the same thing, director of pupil services, that should say six thirty, sixteen, not fifteen. And that savings is nineteen thousand, twenty dollars, again, looking at an interim. And as we discussed last week, that really the new superintendent should have a voice in who the new director of pupil services is. So that's why we would not necessarily fill that with a full-time hire at this point. So, when you look at all of those things, and again, I've got the wrong year on the interim superintendent and director of pupil services, for which I apologize. I'm the typist, so it's my fault. When you look at all of those reductions, you come to a total proposed number of two hundred sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars in total proposed reductions. So if we go back and we take a look at these two scenarios that we have, one with just the ninety-two thousand dollars in it, we are taking a look at the potential of having to ask the town for three hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars, or a two point nine four percent increase to meet that gap budget of twelve million, one sixty-nine. If we think about the possibility that we could reduce transportation, we do have a new contract coming up, that could potentially drop this number from twelve, seven ninety-nine to twelve, six sixteen and change, which means the difference is a little bit less. We take off the proposed reductions, and now we're asking the town in new money for one seventy-eight, zero seventy-two.
So can we drill into that a little bit, so we get a complete understanding? So right now, we have three bus runs, roughly in our budget, it's six thirty-
It's six hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars for the three runs.
For the three runs, and we're looking at entering a new contract, doing two runs, and have a savings of-
About a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars.
Hundred and eighty-two thousand. And since that's transportation, we cannot just transfer that money over. We need to get buy-in from the finance committee select board and get this voted on at town meeting.
Right.
With, so, right there, we're not asking for more money within the budget at that point. It's just having it shifted from transportation into educating of our students.
Correct.
And then, but even if we do that, we still have a hundred and seventy-eight more that we need from the town, on town floor.
Based on this scenario of reductions. So, that's sort of the shortened view of where the budget stands at this point, 'cause of course, we've had a lot of meetings and a lot of discussion around all of the details, but I can certainly answer any questions.
Okay. So, before we do that, if anyone would like to speak to our visitors' comments, please make sure you sign in as a visitor, and we'll have Kathy make sure that I get the slip of paper with the names, and I'll call you out if you have anything to say. But, going back to Dr. Hul, so this is the complete budget. At this point, as a school committee, when we do vote on it, for our line item, at that vote at town meeting, it will have the number, we're recommending the number of-
Yeah, and this is an all-funds number, so if you were looking at, including the transportation piece, you'd be voting the twelve million, three forty-seven, one thirteen. And that's all of the funds, including grants and revolving accounts and everything that is brought to bear, including chapter seventy and the town's appropriation. If you were to do this number up here, this would not include the transportation piece. So I think that's where we have to decide right now, is if you want to recommend this all-funds budget, and in which case, if that's the case, then that's the transportation issue.
So since we get into understanding this a little bit more, so if we were to vote on the twelve, five, two, nine, that means, on the transportation line, it shows the six something at this point, or no?
Yes.
It shows a six something.
Yeah, it would, yes.
So, I think that's what we talked about, that that was the number we wanted, but we do wanna have a discussion on having that money transferred over.
Right.
Because, based on this number, so correct me if I'm wrong, but based on our last meeting, this is where the school committee eliminated the reallocating of grade three, grade six, moving them around.
That was taken off the table.
And along with taking off reductions of our specials teachers.
Correct.
So we took a lot off the table.
That's correct.
With the understanding that this number will pass on town floor with the backing of the community. Even if the other boards do not support it, we wanna make sure that we're doing the right thing for the students of Granby.
Right. And this number here, this is, this is the total proposed reductions. This would've been much higher.
Right.
Would've been an additional two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars if the realignment were still on the table. So we've cut the reductions in half.
Right, but the school committee really heard from the public, so I want everyone to understand that we heard from the public, we heard from the staff and everything else, that at this point, the realignment was not what they wanted. So, as a school committee, we decided to take that off the table. And also, over the past multiple years, we've always valued the specials that we offer in Granby. We feel as a school committee, we don't offer as much as other school districts when it comes to some of the specials, including sports or whatever. So we have to try to keep as much as we can on the table. And so, through many discussions, we, we had to really value what's, what we believe and what, you know, people attending our meetings believe, is what we need to do for a successful school district.
So just a quick question to clarify. The six thirty-two, six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars for transportation, which is a regular transportation line, not including the special transportation, which is two seven eight or something like that. That is for three bus runs, correct?
Yes.
And what we are talking about, that if we do reduce it to two bus runs, then there's a potential saving of a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars?
Yeah.
I think what we talked about, and correct me if I'm wrong, any of you, is that we would not present the budget transportation line with six thirty-two. We would present it as the reduced number for two runs, but as needed, we would go back to the town. We would basically show whatever service we need, but as needed, we would go back to the town and make the educational case for the educational services that we're gonna be offering, and ask for the amount that is needed to be able to, yeah.
Right, but that number, that extra hundred and eighty-two thousand, is not coming from stabilization, it's not coming from free cash. It's really, we want the money that's already there for transportation reallocated.
Yeah, it's not new, that one hundred-
So we're not going to go and say, we have the hundred and eighty-two thousand from free cash or stabilization.
Yeah, we would not be looking at new money.
It's just, we want the budget voted on.
Right, but I mean, in essence, any money, any money in a new budget is new money.
Right.
So whether or not we're asking it for one purpose or another. So what we decided was that we weren't gonna ask for bus services since we were at six thirty-two, because we were reducing it, but we also acknowledged that educational services will potentially need more money.
Right.
At the end, we are saying the same thing, but we're, I'm trying to clarify that we're not asking for bus services to remain at that level, but whatever the savings are, we will be asking for that for educational purposes.
Right, we wanna be as transparent as possible on where the money is being used. Wherever, whether it's for transportation, whether it's, you know, in the classroom, where it is, we wanna make sure we're very transparent on how that money's going to be used.
How accurate are we that, thinking that the bid would be at four hundred and fifty thousand?
I think pretty accurate.
Pretty accurate, so we can really count on that, one eighty-two, which is very important.
Right. Based on, I asked first student if they would do a week's worth of census ridership, so I would know what the numbers are. And clearly, I just got the numbers today, clearly, there's no question that having a single elementary run is more than doable.
And the times would be, the elementary times would be the same, so people would understand that.
And then, there's also an ancillary benefit to doing that as well, and that is to be able to allow for K-six articulation and professional development of teachers. Because right now, the schedule being the way it is, teachers can't get together after school to talk about curriculum or do anything, because one's waiting half an hour for the other one. This way, we're allowing teachers to have the same dismissal time, and therefore allowing teachers to have the same time to be able to talk between the two buildings, as well as among themselves by a particular grade level, which I think is crucial in terms of making sure that the elementary curriculum and instruction that's being offered to the children is one that makes sense in a logical way, not only across a grade level, but also vertically. So this would have that benefit associated with it as well.
Are there any contractual issues of adjusting the starting time of the two elementary schools?
Not the way the contract is worded. The contract is worded based on numbers of hours of day, of the day. Obviously, we would engage the association in that conversation, but I think that this alternative, you know, certainly would be quite viable.
Yeah, much easier for the principals to do the special schedules, those two, or the majority of them.
Correct, that would be another, another side benefit of all of this as well, yes.
Knowing how, knowing how they present things at town meeting, the thing that would be important to remember though, is although we're not asking for, that hundred and eighty-two in savings isn't new money, but they're gonna present it together, which is about that three sixty.
Right. I mean, the three sixty-
That's important for the town, for town members to know that, that it's a hundred and seventy-eight in new money, but that they're actually gonna present it together.
This is the gap, yeah. This three sixty is, it represents the real gap.
Right.
And whether it's a combination of money that's already being used in one place and shifting it over with new money, or it's all new money, one way or the other, that's the gap.
But that, it's just important to clarify that, so that people don't hear here one seventy-eight and go to town meeting and hear three sixty and they're surprised.
Yeah, yeah, it's all one, it's all one big-
And we don't know how it's actually gonna be presented anyway, whether that would be a separate article, which I don't think it would be, we're not asking for that, we're asking for a total, just like every other department. So, I will say that people will say, well, you know, how much more is this under the minimum and everything else, so that three sixty might come up? I would expect it to come up, to be honest with you.
Yep.
But they might not actually see a three sixty, nine two two line item.
Right, right.
Right. But, and I agree, Marie, that the way it's presented at the town meeting sometimes gets confusing, because there is that first section that looks at the minimum plus three hundred and five thousand dollars, and there are two different areas. One is the amount of money that we don't actually touch at all, or is not even related to school services directly.
Yep.
And then, there is the other section related to school services, but the money actually never touches the school, school's administration, it just goes directly through the town. So, yeah, so it does cause some confusion when it's presented in three separate pieces.
Right, it's one point nine million dollars of in-kind expenses, which is allowable under the law, where, you know, the town pays health insurance for employees, so they can count that as an associated cost. There's school choice outgoing, that they are allowed to count as school-associated costs, as well as charter school outgoing, that they're allowed to count as associated costs. The transportation number is another number that they can count as an associated cost at the end of the year. So that's all part of the mix as well. There are two other numbers, if you recall, when we talked about the finance committee's sheet, that talks about the Pathfinder assessment, and while that is a school expense, quote-unquote, on the soundside, it's not a Granby public schools expense. It is vocational education for students attending Pathfinder for that purpose. And then, there's also the retired teacher's health insurance benefit, which again, is not something that the school department could ever put its hands on, it's just part of, of that mix. So while it is an ancillary cost, it's not associated with the public schools, what we're expending.
Right, so, you know, later in the agenda, we have an item on there about forming a task force. And so I think part of, of that task force would be educating the public that, you know, they might see the twelve, five, two, nine, or whatever, or as our budget. But, in reality, that, all that money is not going to the classrooms. It's going, you know, whatever that number was, one point nine was the one point-
Well, this doesn't include that one point nine.
Oh, it doesn't, okay, okay, I thought it did, okay.
This just includes our expenses, yeah.
Okay. Okay. So if there's-
Just to clarify that, the in-kind expenses are not included?
Are not in that twelve, I thought they were.
They were.
That was the whole thing, I thought they were.
Yeah, they are, okay.
They are, yeah, okay, so that's-
We've got different kind of budget management.
So, okay, so that's what I wanted to, so the task force needs to educate, so that twelve, five, two, nine is not going to our classroom.
Right.
Two million is going back to the town, right away.
Right, or the town is incurring the expense and counting it as their contribution to us, yes.
But it does come off.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So that's what people have to understand, how this budget is, I guess, dissected. That it's not, ends up, ends up in front of our students totally. Okay, so with that said, I do wanna open it up to visitors' comments. David, do you have the sheet, or Kathy, do you have the sheet? Do we have any visitors that wish to speak tonight?
Just one person signed in so far.
And who is that?
Gilda Sanchez.
Gilda, oh, you're right here!
Here I am. This is very brief. I'll start by saying a little quote. Mark Twain said, "There are two types of speakers, those who get nervous and those who are liars." And I can admit that I'm very nervous right now. In many surveys, most people indicate that public speaking is one of their worst fears. So it is admirable that there were a lot of people who stood up to make comments at the April thirteenth school committee meeting. And I would like to thank the school committee, the school committee, for listening to the concerns of every student, parent, and teacher who had the courage to speak at that meeting. It's gratifying that you took those concerns into consideration in your decisions regarding the budget. Thank you for making the needs of our students your first priority. Also, I want to thank Dr. Hul for her efforts to keep everyone informed about the budget process. Rumors tend to run rampant when little or no information is shared, so your attempts at making the process transparent are very much appreciated.
Thank you, Gilda, and so that everyone knows who you are?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm a second grade teacher at West Street.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else signed in at this point? Okay, so I think we're going to be-
I have a quick question, a clarification, and I'm speaking from the top of my head, so I might be remembering the wrong numbers. The last time we looked at the, the budget, with all the changes and removing some of the items that were there before the alignment and specials and all that. I think it was about four hundred and ten thousand dollars or so gap, so I think you mentioned that there were some new reductions since then, so we're getting to that three sixty by implementing those new reductions?
Right, and this number, there is a teacher retirement that we got confirmed today.
Okay.
So that has dropped the number you saw last week by a little bit.
Thank you.
And this is, this is part of the dilemma with budgeting. The budget really is a plan, and it's, you know, tonight, we come to a stopping point, but once the fiscal year turns over, there will be adjustments in the budget, which we'll walk you through, because obviously, we can't exceed whatever the bottom line is at that town meeting votes, but obviously, the plan changes. We're dealing with children, and sometimes the plan changes daily, weekly, monthly, whatever. So, just so that people understand that the budget really is a plan, it is not, you know, we can't, once we have a bottom line, we can't exceed it, but oftentimes, there are transfers or shifts within it in order to be able to meet the needs of the children they serve.
So I would like a motion to accept the FY16 budget as presented and approve the proposed fiscal year 2016 budget.
So I'm with.
Second?
Second.
Open for discussion.
Just another note for clarification, we have two lines that say, "Request for town to balance gap budget," one with an asterisk there, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. The gap that we are going to request is still three sixty, nine twenty-two. This is basically us removing the savings that we're gonna get from transportation reduction, but we're gonna have to ask for that amount back to fill the gaps.
So what I might recommend to you is that you vote this number, the twelve million, five twenty-nine, nine sixty-three, just so that way. This would be the number you vote, and then if we can figure out how to make all of this work, then, you know, we can certainly adjust from there.
Okay, so, do you, so in the motion now, you want that number mentioned?
Yeah, I would say this would be the number you'd vote, right now.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget of twelve million, five hundred forty-nine thousand, nine hundred sixty-three dollars, if I have it correct.
Okay, I have a second.
Certainly.
Any discussion on that?
And I'm withdrawing my initial motion.
I was gonna go back after, okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now, can you officially withdraw your motion, or you?
I officially withdraw my original motion.
Okay, we're gonna adjourn the public hearing at this point, and we're just gonna go into our new business, and that's strategic planning task force that we mentioned. So, thank you very much, everyone, we're just going on to the next topic, you're welcome to stay.
You can stay if you want.
So, Dr. Hul sent us an email, I believe it went out today or last night, and it had to do with the task force, and, and everyone should have a copy in front of them. And so, did you wanna lead this discussion, Judy, with all your experience?
Sure, I have, I've done this in a lot of places, and I just have to find the document for. I've done this, I've done this work in a lot of, a lot of different settings, public schools, public school districts, nonprofits, and whatever. And I think it's really crucial that, in order to get a good strategic plan, the school committee sets the leadership for that plan, but it really is the people who are tasked with implementing the plan that make the plan a success. So, it's really important to engage a variety of stakeholders in the plan, and there are several constituent groups that I think the committee should consider in terms of that makeup of it, and I think it should include administration from both the district level and also from, you know, the schools on the committee. I think there should be teachers and staff members representative of either, you do it elementary, secondary, you know, all three schools, however you want to, want to do that. I think it's important to have parents as part of the strategic planning committee. It's important to have, you know, at least a couple of school committee members as part of that strategic planning committee as well, or task force as well. People from town governments. Um, people from town governments, um, other community members who might not have children in school, like seniors, you know, seniors or business leaders or whatever. Um, I think you need a broad spectrum of folks from across the community who can really help sort of think about, you know, where do, where are we now and where do we wanna be? And how many ever years, and how are we gonna get there? Um, I've done this work in a lot of places, I've done it with large groups of people, I'm not afraid to have thirty people on a committee if that's what you decide. Excuse me, um, so I'm more than happy to entertain that thought, you know, in terms of how many people you want, uh, and from what constituent groups. And then to um, you know, think about a process of getting people, whether you want them to send letters of interest to the superintendent's office. And if you get more than, you know, uh, the number that you take a look at the letters and, you know, make some decisions from there or however you wanna do it.
So Judy, uh, or Dr. Hul, thank you very much. And how about if we walk through these five or six bullet points and just talk about representation of the task force? And then we can talk about uh, you know, sit, having applications or letters of intent that they would like to be on, or however we wanna handle that. But, so the administrative representative, both district and school level. At this point, I would be thinking that uh, we would have the superintendent.
Which I'm probably gonna facilitate this, so.
Right. The uh, pupils of director of pupil services or?
You could certainly do that, there is a sort of a shift that's happening at this point, or it could be the director of technology. Uh, standing in the back of the room or other assorted somebody, so at least you have one district level administrator in the mix.
Okay. So, why don't we talk about that? Um, and then when it comes to the, at the school level, I'm assuming you're thinking principals?
Yes.
So, uh, going back to the district, you know, since you're thinking that you facilitated up to large groups, um, does it really matter whether we have one or both? Meaning the pupil, director of pupil services and technology, because they're representing different areas?
Mm-hmm, yep.
So I would say that if they're interested, that uh, we would open that up.
Right. Mm-hmm, um, you know, whether or not you'd have, um, because of course Dr. Jefferson will be on to new adventures come July first. You know, it means you might have an interim in place, whether or not the interim will be able to commit to that, I don't know.
Well, by then, right.
But certainly, um, before he leaves, we can have him be a part of the, part of the plan.
Okay.
Mike, I don't, I don't mean to to back stuff a little bit, but for people that didn't, didn't, weren't here last week, it would be good to explain why we're putting this together. This is part of our, you know, we need a plan to not have to keep asking the town for money.
Okay, so our whole task force here is really um, to get the message out of why we need these additional fundings this year. And then, once, you know, hopefully we're successful, this task force is successful. And um, I wanna caution that as school committee members, if we sit here, we cannot say how people should vote or anything like that. We're, we're there to deliver as much information as possible to the public so that they can make their own decisions to vote. And with that said, that's the, you know, that's really what the task force is geared to be doing. Is really trying to educate why we need the funds this year with the different reductions. And then, uh, after that is, you know, maybe this spreads into a strategic, more strategic. So we have short term and long term goals. So the short term is really to educate why we're asking for this extra, the extra funding. Long term would be, you know, what do we want this school district to be in the future? Where do we want it to go? What is it going to cost? I mean, we saw that the funding actually went down this year, but yet our expenses are going up. And we, over the past multiple years, we've made several cutbacks. So, you know, I, I'm gonna say, is it something that, you know, in the future that this district cannot support three physical buildings? And that uh, building project is very important to us, so we're down to two buildings? Uh, is it, do we talk about regionalizing maybe central office, regionalizing at grade levels or whatever? But, you know, I'm just throwing stuff out on the table like I did last time, you know, do we look into, you know, really alter, alternative things? Such as what Dr. Hul mentioned was, do we engage in a solar farm? You know, do people want a solar farm out front? And would that reduce our costs?
Or any out of the box thinking that may help us?
Right, so, so that's the whole idea. So it's short term and long term, but we, you know, the overall goal is to provide for the students of Granby. Not just now, but in the future, just like education was provided for many of our uh, kids. And when they were students within the str- district. So, uh, we're looking for longevity. So, but that, no, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And, you know, and, and you know, it does show that, you know, if you have a strong school district, that does keep your property values up. And um, and that's extremely important for everyone that owns any sort of property in Granby. So, um. So moving on, so I think for the administrative, we talked about superintendent, principals, dis- um, director of pupil services and technology director, uh, teachers represented from all schools. So we have three schools and, you know, are we looking for, do we want, are we thinking one teacher, two teachers? You know, it's, I really wanna open that up. And, you know, I would, personally, I would like to say, one from, I would like to see one from West Street, one from East Meadow, one from Seventh and Eighth, and one from the high school. Because I think that's where we have these breaks in education. That's how I'm looking at it, I'm not looking at per building, I'm looking at, you know, how we run the district today. Does that, are you guys okay with that?
Sure.
Makes sense.
And so staff represented from all, uh, all schools. So, Dr. Hul, can you educate me on how you're looking at between staff and teachers? And I know they would.
Um, secretaries, parists, you know, whether you wanna say, you know, people who are, you know, custodians, you know.
Okay, so.
Anybody who's not a teacher per se, but provides support services, you know.
Okay. So I would approach that the same way, of four, you know, from, one from West, one from East Meadow, one from Seventh and Eighth, and one from the high school. And if we don't have a Seventh and Eighth, I would say two from this whole building.
Okay.
That's a little different?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I'm assuming nurses fall into administration and non-staff, or is it?
Um, actually, they would probably fall into um, staff. But nursing from an administrative uh, voice point, you might wanna see if the school nurse leader um, will be a part of sort of the administrative tier as well. It's a good thought, thank you, I'm.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I would hate to just leave her out and.
Yep.
Okay, parent representative from all schools, I would like to break this out the same way, maybe we need more, I don't know. But um, you know, um, why don't we go with four at this point? And then we can discuss how they would uh, apply to be on this task force.
This is parents?
Parents. Cause that automatically brings us up to what, seventeen?
Piece of cake.
Yeah. And we're midway through.
With flexibility for if there's really good letters of interest that we could obviously allow for more?
Yeah. Okay, town officials. So, similar to, you know, our building project, um, I would think we'd want one from the select board, one from the finance committee. But I would also like our town manager, if possible. And, you know, I'm talking about town officials, but uh, and we're, we're mentioning the committees, the boards. But, you know, we have a fire chief, we have a police chief, we have the highway department. And, you know, I would, out of those three, I would like at least to offer it up to one of them, maybe the police chief. At this point.
Um, and just related to that, I did meet with the two chiefs last week um, to take a look at the district's emergency operations plan. And the current plan that's here in Granby could stand a little beefing up. And so we also talked about possibly putting together a task force to take a look at that as well. Um, and they're both very interested in being able to do that, engage in that work and move forward from there. So, um, maybe sort of two, two sets of activities going on.
Yeah, and, and you know, and, and, you know, I just narrowed it down to one. And I'm thinking here as you're talking, Dr. Hul, and I mentioned highway department, fire department, and police department. And so what might come up on town floor is if you give the three sixty to the schools, you're taking away from fire,
Right.
police and highway. So it might be beneficial to invite all three of them and let them make the decision. And hopefully at least get educated why we're asking for this three sixty. Cause I hate to think that we're pinning one department against the other.
Right.
Um, that never goes over well, and I think we should be working as a community in what's right for the community.
Correct.
So, does everyone agree to that?
Agreed.
Yeah.
How about um, somebody from the school building committee?
I think we're getting a lot of them by, but.
Anybody else that's?
Um.
Well, there are community reps on the school committee, you know, on the school building committee, you know.
There are community members, I think it's almost the same composition, yeah.
So.
And what, and again, you're, you're also thinking about people who were volunteering your time and they may not have, you may have other people in town.
How about the planning board? Just throwing it out there?
No, I know, I know, and I'm, I'm bright, I'm taking notes and I'm thinking, sorry. I can't respond so quickly, because as you're saying that, I'm thinking, you know, one, you know, when you think about it, that's outside of the, the school. But actually really, uh, work with um, our students as student athletes is GAA. Uh, where, you know, part of, you know, teacher, staff, parent representative, that could be booster, that could be PTO or whatever. But totally outside is GAA, it could, and then, you know, outside of board. So I don't know if we wanna continue that, so, but Deanne, you mentioned the planning board. I mean.
It's worth sending an invitation.
I would actually send them, please send invitation, because we're talking about declining enrollment and everything.
Yep.
If it's not, it's not gonna be uh, school choice, it has to be from within. And if the natural progression is not going that way, people are gonna come in. So planning board will know whether or not there are uh, plans for new subdivisions, whether there are, there are other plans that may uh, attract other folks to this town.
Oh, okay. No, I think that's good, so that one line item of town officials, we're up to one, two, three, four, five, six, which I think is good at this point. Now, should we invite someone from GAA?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, so that brings, uh, now are there other areas that I'm missing?
Are, are we in uh, community?
We're in town, still in town officials I put down, but I guess that's, I guess that, that is, uh, community is GAA.
This is now community, I think.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we have, so town officials, I have select board, finance committee, highway department, fire, police, and planning.
Town manager.
Town manager. So that's seven. Okay, and then, so now community members, I have GAA.
Senior center.
Senior center.
COA, yep.
Um, Lions Club?
Sure.
Or you guys represent that?
Yeah, I think, I think we've got us.
Whether we want you or not, um, what other community?
Well, we have school.
PTO.
Yeah.
Music businesses too, right?
Music parents.
Isn't there a chamber that does South, Halle, and Granby together?
Yeah.
A chamber, yep, South, Halle, Granby, yep, we have one chamber. And music parents, they're a separate entity.
PTO.
Would PTO fall under the parents of the school, so same with boosters?
Well, PTO. Yeah, I'm thinking the music boosters would be sort of the same. You could say to those particular groups, you know, that we'd like representatives, like.
Because we still have PAC two.
Yeah.
So two suggestions, um, one is, I think, you know, we, we, I think we were nicely uh, flexible and we put some of the numbers uh, higher than we started, like the uh, town officials and all that. I would like to have more parents, and also if um, everybody else agrees, some student members too.
Yes, agreed, yep. I think a couple of high school kids would be, yep, agreed.
We are posting thirty.
I think I know who to ask.
Yeah, so I just wanna go through, so.
Right, Mr. Cavalo, I think we know who to ask.
So, so for, so I just wanna recap these numbers real quick, and I know they're not finalized. But right now, we have five for admin, four for teachers, uh, four for staff, four for parents with the, uh, on the table to expand that to, and I think, uh, Marie, you mentioned that, you know, depending on if parents respond, you know, their interests. So that number could change based on if we get the interest from the parents. And then from the town officials, we're up to seven. Uh, community members, I have uh, GAA, um, music parents, senior center. And.
Businesses.
Businesses.
Chamber, so the chamber, would that would cover business? And then we have a, a few high school students, so, um.
It's all good. Can be done.
So any other areas that you're thinking we should cover? I mean, I have, so far I have five. I have thirty without school committee.
Bring it.
So, on the school committee now, if we could have a couple representation. Uh, I would like to be a, I'll just say an ad hoc member right now. So if I'm able to attend, I will, I will attend and try to be as quiet as possible. Uh, but could we have two uh, that are definitely interested and can commit to attending this task force?
I'll volunteer.
Okay.
Go ahead. I know, while I'm thinking of the superintendent service too.
So am I, that's why I didn't.
I'm just wondering if, cause they're gonna overlap.
Sure, well, long term, long term they might, short term, they probably won't because of, you know, our narrow window here for the budget.
They could.
But then, and that's our short term goal, but the long term is just continued conversation. Going forward on, you know, overall strategy, where do we want our school, how do we want our school district molded for the future?
I'll figure looking to get him as well.
Yes.
How is that gonna happen quickly there?
Well, we have to.
Just to get everybody on.
Yeah, we have to get, you know, some invitations out, you know, there's, potentially we could get some of this done during the summer months, you know.
Well, no, the task force, though, the first part, the short term goal, don't we wanna do that sooner to, for this whole educating around?
Right, which means that if we could get a, the committee named within the next couple of weeks, we could start in June and work during the summer. Right, which means that if we could get a, the committee named within the next couple of weeks, we could start in June and work during the summer.
No.
No, the short term, prior to the meeting, to end the meeting.
I thought part of this task force was to educate on that extra 360. Are you saying that's not what it is?
No, that would not be the work of us, particularly.
Not at all.
This is really about the strategic plan and how, how.
Okay.
We talked about making sure that people in town understood that we are actually trying to figure out ways.
Right.
Right.
I like where you're going with that.
I do too.
Because I thought that's what we kinda talked about too, but I.
Well, we already, we already decided on a budget, so hopefully we know our story. And we're gonna be able to work on that and share with the town leader. But if we're gonna call this a strategic planning task force, explaining what already happened is not really the, you know.
Okay, that's fine if that's what you guys agree to. Gosh, I wish you told me that fifteen minutes ago.
I really liked listening to that.
Okay, so yes, Deanne, definitely this is gonna clash with superintendent.
She really wants it done.
I do.
Okay, we have Ann Marie. Do I hear another voice?
No.
Deanne wants to do it.
I do really wanna do it.
I'm trying not to be the busiest person in the world, so.
That's what I'm trying at, too.
I know you want to do it, but are you willing to do it?
I'm willing to do it.
Right.
Can you do it?
Are you signing up for it?
But if it's gonna conflict with the search committee, and you'd be one very busy lady.
I know, and I work in the evenings.
Can you take a sabbatical or something?
Yeah.
We're gonna be awful busy with the school building committee too. That's gonna, should really kick up and get going. And then Ann Marie's gonna be on too, so.
Do we have to commit right this second?
So many nights in a week here.
No. I guess we don't.
And again, the task force is not gonna be.
Why don't we say that we will have two school committee members? Okay, two school committee members, so I think that.
Since you're getting us, since getting all the other people on here.
Yeah. And who knows, based on, you know, the short term, long term that I talked about, that everyone kinda agreed to, but we're thinking differently. My schedule could change to in the coming months.
So, parents, can we increase that number instead of one rep from each? What is the maximum we can tolerate?
I can do it with around thirty people.
And I'm saying it in a, you know, in a.
So, we're at thirty people without increasing it.
Thirty?
We're already at thirty without increasing it, but.
But that's just going on invitation.
Going on invitation only. So, but we need to talk about the process. And Dr. Hul mentioned about, you know, submitting letters to the superintendent.
That you get them.
And so, you know, if we get a bulk of parents that are truly interested, I, I think we should just go through them and say, you know what, these look like two great letters.
So, we're not capping this?
No, 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 it's really good start, yeah. So, it's, no, so, this is.
We won't get all these people anyway.
Yeah.
They'll be here. They'll always.
Well, I don't think one has anything to do with the other.
No, but, you know, at the, at the meeting the other night, we had so many people and.
Yeah.
No, I'm not saying parents. I'm saying with all of these other representatives, there's no way we're gonna get.
And they won't all be able to always make it.
I'm sure we'll be able to get more parents.
And maybe in this situation, we change meeting times or whatever, or try to accommodate somehow. I don't know what would be the, the perfect time or date or, but we should talk about that at some point once we get the feedback.
Once Judy shows up with that big tray of cookies.
When would you like to get started in this? Cause determine whatever the else going on. Do you think you could get started this before?
Well, obviously you meet again on the fourth, so, which is next week. So, to get invitations out and get letters of interest back is probably, you know, from groups that you'd say we're choosing representatives to or getting commitments a week is probably not realistic. I'm guessing that probably at your June meeting, you could make some decisions if you're way oversubscribed in one group. You know, again, you wanna be careful about balance. It's sort of like school councils where there's a balance of teachers commensurate with parents. You don't want one group being much larger than another group. So, that's why it needs to really be a representative sample. So, you wanna be a little bit careful about that.
And so, with, with that said, Judy, I'm wondering if we should, in the coming month, put something on GCAM, the education of this task force, why we're forming it, why we feel it's important to have representation from different areas of the community. And then, you know, give the process, not the process, but instructions to submit a letter of interest to, to your office.
On a deadline.
And a deadline.
That would go out on your blog too.
Yep.
Yeah, I've been having a blog.
And the website, get on the.
And the website.
And the website, Sentinel, Town Reminder.
Yep, I can do a press release or I can, Dr. Walter's always here.
And then specific letters go out to these other folks, police chief, fire chief.
Yep.
Any discussion on the task force at this point? I think we've made a lot of progress of defining it. And I have to say, Dr. Hul, you've made it easy for us, so thank you.
Thank you.
And, you know, I, I say it at every meeting lately, but I can't thank the administration, the staff, and you, Dr. Hul, and really the parents in the commu, community, you know, coming forward and speaking up and going on this voyage with us as we're trying to work out the budget. And it's not an easy year for that.
Right.
So, thank you.
The communication, I think, has been exemplary and has been way overdue. And I think it's made a big difference in the town.
My philosophy is that this is the public's trust and the public's money. You have a right to know.
We agree with that.
Thank you. So, I think that was it on our agenda.
It is.
I wanna go through it for sure, make sure that we're good. And it, and that's it. So, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. It is six fifty seven.
Motion to adjourn. A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much. Really appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you.